All right, good morning, everyone. We'll call to orders. Board of Franklin County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, July 22nd. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Present.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Chair Waymire?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
All right, you'd all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and then our invocation will be led by Pastor Drew Redding of Grace Community Fellowship in Ottawa. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all. Second place, still there? Uh, all right, go ahead, Pastor.
All right, I wanted to begin just by reading a few short verses from Isaiah 43. But now, this is what the Lord says. He who created you, Jacob, he who formed you, Israel. Do not fear, for I have redeemed you. I have summoned you by name; you are mine. When you pass through the waters, I will be with you. And when you pass through the rivers, they will not sweep over you. When you walk through the fire, you will not be burned. The flames will not set you ablaze. For I am the Lord your God, the Holy One of Israel, your Savior. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, I just pray that you would just grant these men and women your protection, that you would be watching over them, that you'd be granting them just wisdom and discernment as they seek to lead. We pray that you would empower them to new heights of leadership, that they would be able to just lead effectively, that they would be able to seek the best of the community. We pray, Heavenly Father, that you would be with all of us here in Franklin County. That you'd be watching over us, protecting us. We pray these things in your sensibly name. Amen.
Amen.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Correspondent's and organizational business, Derek, do we have anything on that?
No, sir.
All right, we have public comment, or it looked like he called in. So, uh, no public comment. Consent agenda today would include meeting minutes from July 15th and tax change orders in the amount of negative $5,524.62. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Commissioner Howard, I'll make the motion.
Looks like Commissioner-
Commissioner Dunn, second.
All right.
Commissioner Stottermeyer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes. All right, now the items of business, first of which is a proposal for engineering services for the landfill. David Lee's on line to walk us through this item.
Commissioners, this is David. Uh, this is a, the, uh, the formal proposal for engineering services to prepare an expansion and feasibility evaluation for the CND landfill. Uh, the purpose of this is recently, as you know, we had a life expectancy calculation prepared by SCS engineers earlier this year to give us an estimate of what are, what the lifespan is remaining at the CND landfill. Um, the, the results of that indicate that we have approximately seven to nine years, um, depending on, on factors such as compaction rates and the, the amount of waste that is, uh, uh, accepted at the landfill each year. But we expect to be in that seven to nine range, um, lifespan. The purpose of this, uh, this proposal, this evaluation, is to see what comes after the seven to nine years. Uh, we need to start planning today so that we make the, we take the proper steps to ensure that at the end of the lifespan of the current, uh, CND landfill, we know what comes next. So that we have a plan, uh, and that we are working towards that plan, uh, beginning today. Um, the, the cost to, uh, to build a brand-new landfill somewhere else could be upwards of a million dollars and take a few years to go through the permitting process. We want to, uh, be ahead of that curve and, and be prepared for it. And so we are, um, asking, um, for you to approve this proposal from SCS engineers in the amount of $16,000 to help us, uh, plan for the future so that we have a solid plan and so that, um, hopefully, we've taken all the surprises out of, uh, what comes next with the landfill. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And also, as a part of the attachments, um, I included the, uh, the report from earlier this year and then also, um, um, a chart that, that shows how much, uh, waste we have taken in over the last, well, since 2010, so about 10 years worth. So you see those trends.
All right, we went over this thoroughly Monday, but, uh, is there any follow-up questions? Anybody needs to ask David before we look to vote on this? It doesn't sound like it, uh, so, uh, would anyone like to make a motion, uh, to authorize the execution of a proposal from SCS engineers in the amount of $16,000 to prepare an expansion feasibility evaluation report for the Franklin County construction and demolition landfill?
Commissioner Dickinson, I will make that motion.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Commissioner Stottermeyer, second.
Commissioner Howard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes, second item of business also deals with the landfill and has to do with purchasing a piece of equipment. Go ahead, David.
Commissioners, this, uh, this item is very much related to the first item. Uh, as you recall, last week, we did, um, a kind of a deep dive into the landfill. Uh, one of the items that, um, that, that staff is recommending that we, um, move forward with is the acquisition of a landfill compactor. Uh, the purpose of this compactor is to allow us to more efficiently, um, uh, compact the, the waste that comes in. The, well, when we had the, uh, the study done back in 2014, which is the landfill life expectancy calculation, uh, we had a compaction rate of, um, .51, uh, uh, tons per cubic yard. Uh, that has dropped down due to the increase in material that's being brought in. We simply don't have the time and the machine, uh, that we currently have is not, uh, as efficient as it needs to be to be able to compact that, to, to increase the, uh, the waste densities that we're getting at the landfill. Um, this particular piece of equipment, uh, we are estimating that we should get an additional three years of life out of our existing landfill if nothing else changes. Uh, just by adding this equipment, we will prolong the life of the landfill. Uh, and as we go through the, um, in the future, as we go through the permitting process to, um, possibly raise the elevation of, of the existing landfill, uh, or move, this piece of equipment will still bring benefit to that. Uh, and, and the purpose of it is really to extend the life, um, of the, uh, of the various, of the landfill and then also to be, uh, more efficient with the, our daily, uh, operations out there. Uh, we looked at, um, looking for a used machine, uh, with, with low hours. Those don't come around very often. Uh, we had an opportunity earlier this year, but quite frankly, we were not ready. We did not have the information that we needed to make a good decision. Uh, this machine is, um, is built and we can acquire it within three or four weeks. Uh, the price tag is, is quite, um, well, it's $478,000, so it's quite expensive. Uh, and we would look to finance that over a four- or five-year period. Um, and, um, the money to pay for this comes out of the special caps fund, which is, uh, completely, um, generated from user fees. There's no property tax or sales tax dollars that, uh, that go into this to pay for it.
All right. Uh, any questions for David on the purchase of this machine?
This, Commissioner Howard, I have one, I have one quick question. On the financing, David, are we, uh, going to finance through the company or are we going to look for bids?
We will, we will bid this out just like we do the, um, uh, the, the motor graders that we've been purchasing. Um, I find that, uh, the rates that we get through that process are very, very competitive and, and so there's some benefit to, uh, to us to, to go through that bidding process.
You know, we've talked a lot about the purchase of this machine, Bud Day. I don't think we talked a whole lot about, uh, buying outright versus, uh, financing it. Um, what's your rationale there to go ahead and finance it?
Well, you know, right now, the, the fund has a fairly healthy balance. Um, and we would like to keep that balance, um, you know, as flush as possible. Uh, financing obviously costs us some interest, but, uh, we feel like, um, um, it is a better, better use of that fund to be able to, uh, pay a little bit as we go, um, so that, uh, we have funds available, um, so we're not depleting the fund today, um, so that whenever we do get ready to, um, uh, permit additional sales, that we have dollars available to do that, uh, at the landfill. Or other capital expenses that may come along, we want to be able to, uh, absorb those costs without, uh, uh, depleting the, our reserves.
Sounds like if we weren't looking to potentially permit more sales or do something, something there, we'd be more inclined to pay cash, but since we have a little bit of a, uh, question mark ahead of us as far as some of those costs, you're, you're wanting to hold on to cash?
Yes, sir. If we had 20 years to go on the landfill, we would certainly, uh, pay cash and, and be done with it. But, uh, the fact is, we don't have that long. Uh, it's, you know, even with this machine, it's 10 to 12 years, uh, which will go by awfully quick. Um, and it would like to, we would like to hold on to the, those reserves.
All right.
Uh, this, Commissioner Dunn, uh, David, I was looking at the picture in our, in our packet.
Uh-huh.
And it looked, and it looked like the operator was, uh, facing the opposite, opposite of the direction of the blade. Does that have a swivel seat on that thing?
No, I, I, it, it, the operator definitely faces towards the blade.
Faces towards the blade, okay.
Yes, sir. It, it does not have a, a swivel seat.
Okay, that's my only question.
Hey, Colt.
Yeah, go ahead, Derek.
This, Derek, I would just point out that while we're gonna solicit bids for financing and certainly agree with David, I'm not keen on depleting our solid waste fund. That being said, if we solicit bids and, and the terms aren't favorable to us, then obviously, we still have the ability to take a different route. Soliciting the bids themselves doesn't bind us to do anything. Um, and we would also have the option of, you know, paying a, a chunk of it in cash. I mean, there's, at this point, it's really just, you know, we're gonna solicit those bids to look at the rates and, and then we'll do, make sense for us. We just want to keep our options open at this point.
You bet. That's something we'll, we'll vote on later as a separate item. All right, but today, we're, uh, looking to purchase the equipment, uh, or commit to doing so. Is there a motion to authorize the purchase of the Cat, uh, 816K landfill compact for fully equipment in the amount of $478,222?
This is Don, I'll make the motion to approve.
All right, is there a second?
Commissioner Dickinson, I'll second it.
Sorry.
Looks like Commissioner Dickinson got in there with a second.
Commissioner Dickinson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes. All right, our third item of business is to consider approving an emergency project utilizing High Plains Inc. to repair a bridge deck issue on the 300 block of Colorado Road just north of Butler Road. All abstained from this item, uh, contractor that's, uh, potentially gonna do this repair, works in the same industry I do. I've always abstained when, uh, uh, they've been, been on agenda items and, uh, occasionally, we do business, uh, together, so I think it'd be appropriate if I just set it out. So, go ahead.
Commissioners, this is David again. Um, last week, we were notified that a hole had developed in this bridge deck. Um, and this is on Colorado Road just north of Butler Road, so it's, it's down in the southern part of the, the district. We've been keeping our eye on this bridge for quite some time. Uh, we continue to patch the same locations, uh, time and time again. Uh, when this hole developed, um, and as you can see from the pictures that I attached, uh, basically, you could see the river or the creek, uh, down below, uh, through the hole and you can see the exposed rebar. Uh, so this kind of elevated the situation quite significantly. Uh, we immediately barricaded off the, uh, that part, portion of the, of the bridge and we called in, uh, High Plains, uh, Inc., who does a lot of our, um, uh, special bridge repair work. And we also ca, contacted our, uh, and called in our, uh, normal bridge engineer with CFS engineers. Uh, we all met on site and, uh, the second picture that, that has the barricades in it kind of shows, uh, what the condition was when we met on site. The, um, the results of that meeting and the, the way that we plan to, uh, to move forward is, um, uh, at this location, and we think that there is at least three other locations on this bridge that have similar circumstances that we're gonna take a look at. But, uh, the, the idea is to chip away the, uh, the material that is, uh, eroded, uh, that is not any good anymore, um, and then to for, uh, form up and pour new concrete over this to give us a, uh, once again, a solid bridge deck in these areas. We are also going to pull up, uh, the asphalt that, that is overlaid over this bridge deck and we're gonna look for additional locations that may need to be addressed. Um, that way, we don't believe, uh, that, that the bridge needs to be, uh, completely redecked. We think that we can solve it with, uh, repairing these, uh, few locations. And then, uh, once we have, um, have the patches completed, we will come back, uh, with an overlay, asphalt overlay, once again, over this bridge as we are doing the, uh, patch and, uh, overlay on the rest of the county roads that, uh, that we're gonna be looking at here awfully soon. Uh, so, I, although I don't have a, uh, proposal from High Plains just yet, we wanted to bring this item before you to get your approval to continue moving forward. Um, I expect to have, uh, an estimate, uh, any day now. Uh, High Plains wanted to get through this first patch to see, um, what work was involved so that then they could better estimate the remaining work. So eventually, I will have a, have an estimate, but I don't write at this point. But, uh, the work is ongoing. Uh, the, the bridge is, is, uh, down to one lane with signage at both ends, but we did want to make you aware of it and make sure you were, um, you approved with us moving forward.
Commissioner Dickinson, is this a fairly well-traveled bridge?
Yes, yes, ma'am, it is.
Uh, Commissioner Dunn, does this have a weight limit on this bridge?
It, it, it does. I, I couldn't tell you what it, what the weight limit is. I would have to, uh, look at the signage out there. Uh, once we're done with this and we take the asphalt off and put new asphalt on, the tonnage should remain the same.
Commissioner Dickinson, again, are you, if you, uh, are gonna repair this, will you be having to shut down the bridge and if so, for how long?
Um, we will do this one lane at a, well, um, I take that back. We are doing the bridge repair one lane at a time. So we will, uh, do all of the, this picture is in the, um, that would be in the, uh, northbound lane. Uh, we are gonna take care of all the locations in the northbound lane, get those patched, and then we will move the barricades over and then take care of the southbound lanes. When we overlay it, we will close the bridge, uh, but that will only be for a matter of a few hours for them to do that, uh, overlay work. It won't, it won't be a significant, um, delay in, uh, being able to reopen the bridge.
This is Commissioner Howard, and I drive across this bridge a lot and I have had several calls about the bridge and, uh, the condition it is and that hole was getting pretty, pretty bad. And, uh, anyway, yeah, it needs, definitely needs to be done.
Uh, Commissioner Dunn, what, what's the span of that bridge?
I don't know the, um, um, I don't know what that dimension is. It's, it's well over 100 feet, I believe, or, or thereabouts.
Okay. All right, uh, if you guys are gonna vote, uh, if somebody'd like to make a motion on this, go ahead and do so.
This, Commissioner Howard, I'll make the motion that we, um, repair that bridge.
Commissioner Dunn, second.
Commissioner Dunn, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer? Commissioner Stottermeyer, how do you vote? Commissioner Howard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Stottermeyer, are you there yet? And Chair Waymire?
All abstained. Looks like maybe we lost Don.
Commissioner Dickinson, did we need to include the, the High Plains? The utilization of High Plains in that, or are we good?
Uh, the motion was fine.
Thank you.
And you've got three affirmative votes, so, um, we do need to figure out what happened with Don, but this item passed no problem, so.
All righty, is he still showing his being on the meeting?
He is from my screen, yes.
All right, maybe the connection just got, got weak and he's not able to send audio. Uh, let's see here, um, maybe we take, uh, well, in a way, we'll take a couple minutes and see if we can't remember to dial back in. Maybe that'll reset it. Uh, Dustin, are you on? What are you thinking?
Yes, I am, sir. He was calling in from his landline in his house, so I'm not quite sure what's going on. It's still connected. It's not muted. I don't believe he has the capability to mute it from his end the way he's calling in.
All right.
I can try and reach him on his cell phone if that would be useful.
Yeah, let's do that. We'll take, uh-
He did send me a, a message, uh, asking if we lost everything, so I'll ask him to disconnect and call back in.
Okay, all right, let's take a couple, couple minutes.
Well, if you, everybody else is still there, is there a way to hang that phone up and call back in? Yep, we can put it on pause for a couple minutes and wait until you come back in.
Sounds like he's gonna dial back in. When do you think we'll get our machine delivered, David?
I'm hoping that, uh, it's within three or four weeks.
Great.
Sure, this, this particular machine is, um, was sitting in Decatur, Illinois. Um, and it's, they just need to bring it in and, and check it out and, and send it on its way. So, um, uh, so that's what we're hoping. If, if it's got to be a different machine, the lead time is about 12 weeks. Uh, so sometime within the next few months, we will have a new machine out there. And I should've said, um, and I, I forgot to mention that, um, the, um, compactor is gonna come with three days of onsite training, um, in the, in the use of the equipment. So that'll be beneficial to our folks and we'll have a couple of additional days of training, um, once we've used the machine for a few months. We'll schedule that. So, um, both of those things are positive, um, outcomes from this purchase.
I imagine staff's probably excited at the prospect of getting this. I know they were at times overwhelmed with the volume that, uh, they were receiving and trying to keep up, uh, with the equipment they had, so.
That is, that is correct. And, and by keeping the, uh, the existing track loader, we'll be able to utilize it for other purposes. But, uh, when things get really busy, we'll have the, uh, the capability of adding another operator in that to help, uh, move the material around and, and work the hill, uh, during times of high volume. So, um, all positive outcomes.
Good. Yeah, Dustin, you have a status on getting Don back on?
Uh, he said he would call back in. I have not seen him show back up on the meeting yet.
Yeah, all right. Sometimes it takes a minute longer when you dial in on the landline.
It looks like he is back connected now or should be connected now.
Good deal.
I'm here.
All right, hey, Don. Well, let's move down the list to the workstation rotation, uh, for fiscal year 2020. This is an item that lies with Dustin, so go ahead, Dustin.
All right, Commissioners, uh, as Chair Waymire said, this is an annual, um, workstation rotation. We are looking at 33 total workstations this year to a variety of departments. Um, on that total, you can see where some of it is paid out of the IT general fund, some of it is reimbursed back from those individual departments. We are, uh, changing a little bit about what we're doing this year with, obviously, everything that's been going on. All workstations will now have a camera microphone built into the monitor to help facilitate that access. Um, and we were able to get that, that all increased, or those things added in and actually decreased the cost per system by $6.78 each.
All right. This is an annual item and pretty straightforward. We're gonna purchase some workstations. Any questions for Dustin? Doesn't look like it. Get this screen pulled up to see what the motion reads. Be, uh, is there a motion to approve the purchase of equipment from Dell Inc. for the fiscal year 2020 workstation rotation in the amount of $35,723.22?
This is Don, motion to approve.
All righty, is there a second?
Commissioner Dunn, second.
Commissioner Stottermeyer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes, this item is our annual Microsoft enterprise agreement. Go ahead, Dustin.
All right, this one is very similar in that I bring it in front of you every year as well. However, it is a three-year renewal. So last time I brought this, uh, first generation in front of you was in 2017. There was a significant increase that we see on this renewal. Um, that is due to our office suite changing over to an Office 365 license, which is an online version across all of our licensing. This was, one, due to what we're currently going through, but, two, also, the current version that we have, I am told, will be the last version and then everything going forward will be pushed to Office 365. So we wanted to go ahead and move on to, uh, that so we don't fall behind. So we wanted to go ahead and move on to that so we don't fall behind. With those increases, we are hoping to be able to take care of that this current year out of a Spark Fund. If not, we will, we will make those work within the 567 Fund. We did see that increase of about $16,563.34 is overflowing what we were previously, and it is, as I said, due to all the office side licensing.
All right. Any questions for Dustin on this one? Would somebody be willing to make a motion to approve a quote from SHI for renewal of the Microsoft enterprise agreement in the amount of $54,559.44?
Commissioner Howard, I'll make the motion.
All right. Is there a second? Mr. Dunn, second.
Commissioner Howard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Dustin. All right, our sixth item of business would be considered for approval entering into a memorandum, memorandum of understanding with FCDC for utilization of office space in the county annex building. Derek's gonna elaborate on this item?
Yeah, thanks, Cole. This is Derek. As the five of you know, this is something we've been talking about for months. We have been discussing with FCDC the possibility of moving into county office space. We discovered when looking at potential drawings of remodels that we would have ample office space, and so, in discussing it with Paul Bean and with the FCDC board, we found there was a lot of interest. Their board has already executed the attached MOU. As you can see, it is a very simple document, and that's because, really, the purpose is to just formalize our intent. This doesn't bind us to any particular timeline. I know Paul is anxious to get into some new space, and certainly county staff, including myself, are anxious to get into the new space. I think the things we can potentially do over there are, are gonna increase our ability to do it. That is currently, as you know, we have retained an architect to provide a set of detailed drawings. When we originally tried to put this to bid, what we were told by general contractors was that our drawing was just, it was, it needed more detail effectively, and so that is where the project itself is at. And this document in front of you, again, just kind of formalizes our intent with FCDC. So I would take any questions that you have.
Doesn't sound like we need any additional information on this one since we've been talking about it. It's exciting that we're gonna have a situation or a, where both of us can benefit and we'll be able to support FCDC. One, one question, Cole, this is Mr. Dunn. What's the timeframe on, on this remodeling?
Yeah, that's a great question, Roy, and, and the board is gonna dictate a lot of that. We are waiting our drawing. Once we have the drawing, I will be back in front of you asking for permission to, again, solicit bids for the project. If the board agrees with moving forward, then at that point, we will probably be subject to the availability of contractors to get in and, and complete the project. I've been told that it shouldn't be a, you know, a terribly sophisticated project, so I don't know that the construction time will be super long, but it'll just be, you know, getting the required permissions from you because we'll need to solicit bids. And of course, once we have them, be back in front of you again to ask for acceptance of the low bid, and so the board will dictate the pace.
Okay, thank you. All right. Well, it'll be good to know who the space is gonna be designed for and utilized by so that we'll know what to build, so that's where we are today. And would anybody like to make a motion to approve entering into the memorandum of understanding with FCDC for utilization of office space in the county annex building? This is Commissioner Dunn. I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, motion. All right, is there a second?
Commissioner Stottlemyre.
Commissioner Howard, I'll second it.
Looks like Commissioner Stottlemyre got in there for the second.
Commissioner Dickinson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Seventh item would be to review the summary of the 2021 budget to be published and confirm the budget hearing date. Janet?
So Commissioners, we've been working really hard on getting the budget ready for your review. As you guys know, we did ask all the department heads to keep all of their expenditures flat this year in their contractual services, commodities, and other line items. We did, however, try to maintain our employee pay plan that we have in place, which affords raises for our employees this year, each year, so they continue to move up through the ranges, and we continue to retain our good employees that we have. So those are the only increases that we have really put into this budget. So I know that Derek sent you guys each individually an update on where we were at on the budget and the things that we have done to, to the budget, and I will let Derek go into that.
Well, yeah, I would just ask the Commissioners if you have any questions. You obviously all got the email that I sent yesterday. That was really meant to just highlight some of the high points of that budget, the free our reserve funds, what we did in particular budgets like employee benefits and debt service, and so I would say, any questions for Janet and I, why don't we, we answer those first?
I got one question, Derek. This is Dawn. On the, uh, number three on the Health Department?
Uh-huh.
Uh, would, I know we were eligible for some of the COVID-19 funds because of having to hire more help and overtime and so forth, right?
Yes, that is correct.
So Dawn, I think, Dawn, I think the answer to your question, so that we did lower down the expected revenues this year by $50,000, and so it's our understanding that as far as COVID funds, we can use that to hire more staff directly related to COVID, but we cannot use it for loss of revenue. So our only op, option was to lower down the revenue, but we will pay for salary, additional salaries from the Health Department budget as a reimbursement from COVID funds.
All right. Okay, I, I think I halfway catch on. Thank you.
This is Commissioner Dickinson. I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I listened to the candidate forum last night, and one of the questions that they asked for the people that are running for Rick Howard's seat was, how are you going to keep the county commission from raising the taxes every year? And I pretty much yelled at my phone and went, we don't raise your taxes every year. But yeah, I think people don't understand that. When their taxes go up, it's not us.
Yeah, I think that same question I am, and, and yeah, I, I think there is some misunderstanding. You know, total budget dollars may increase, but that does not mean that taxes increase. And as I said in my email, the budget that we are proposing for 2021 lowers taxes eight tenths of a mil, so almost a mil. And if you look at this year's budget and where it was from 2019, over the last two budget years, or '21 and '20, we're looking at a decrease in taxes of a mil and a half. It's, it's just over 1.5 mils, which I, is certainly an appreciable decrease by my standards, and I would hope that anyone would view that as an appreciable decrease. So we are not on a trend of increasing taxes, and that is very, very clear based on the summary you received, which is also what will get published. And so I say it all the time, and Janet and I are incredibly proud of the budgets that we put in front of the board, and we will stand all day long for questions on this budget because it does not represent irresponsible spending. It does not represent increases in taxes. Like, we are capturing additional revenue based on our valuations, but that revenue is being put towards debt service. It's being put towards reserve funds so that we can pay cash for projects and not incur more debt. Not incurring more debt saves us money in the long run, and so the goal isn't to slash and burn as much as we can today. It is to build a long-term, sustainable plan that ultimately results in lower overall taxes, and, and every year we do this, we're closer to that goal. So I'm, I'm very thrilled with what we have in front of you today.
If I could just add to that, I think it's worth noting publicly something that Derek did mention in his email to the five of you, that we have over $5 million in new construction, and we did have an industrial tax abatement that came off the, came off the abatements this year, so we'll be coming back on the tax roll. So we have about a total of close to $6 million that's coming on the tax rolls this year. And despite the uncertainties in the economy, we can look around the county and see that we have a lot, a lot of housing starts still going on, so we anticipate we'll have more new construction value next year to help us out. One other note, I did send this budget over to our auditor Rodney to look over, which he does that at no additional charge to us each year, just for providing our audit services for us. And he did recommend a few minor changes, but nothing significant to, to what, what we're looking at today. So I'll make a few, like, clerical changes, but the dollar amount overall will remain the same.
All right. Okay, this is Commissioner Dunn. We talked last week about refinancing the debt on the juvenile detention center. How, how would that affect our budget if we get that lowered?
So that debt is serviced in the annex fund, which is an enterprise fund, which is a non-tax levy fund. So how that impacts it, it would just add additional dollars to that fund. And as you guys know, in a previous, in the previous item to this one, we were discussing the MOU with FCDC and remodeling Annex Suites 1 and 2 for the administration department, which is something we've been working on for quite a while now. And so that would just add additional revenue to the annex fund and would allow for that remodel to happen with less pressure to the annex fund. Also, those, those additional dollars pay for upgrades to that building that are important to other tenants in that building, like carpeting the common spaces, painting the common spaces, you know, any upgrades to HVAC units or restroom facilities that are common to the building. So it's not, it's not a tax, there's no tax implication in that because the annex fund is an enterprise fund, but it certainly does help in the long run for us not to have to use our cash reserves to do those repairs and upgrades to the building.
Janet, I was referring to the, uh, the juvenile detention, the, the.
Right. Right, and those bonds, those bonds, when they were originally approved, were paid for out of the annex fund because we had revenue in there that was not being used, but it was dollars that the county commission had control of. So you guys make the lease payments on those bonds from the annex revenue fund.
Oh, okay, okay. That clears it up. Thank you. This is Commissioner Dunn again. I just thank, thank you and Derek for all the work you've done on the budget, and I think it helps the Commissioners to understand that better, and I think we're moving along fine on the 2021 budget.
Thanks, Roy. Like Derek said, we take a lot of pride in putting this budget together and, and making sure that we have a long-term vision in, in place so that we're planning for the future, we're not just planning for today.
This is Commissioner Stottlemyre. I feel the same way as Roy. It just, it was too bad this year that, that we got hit with an unusual year with the COVID problem, and we weren't able to do as much of a face-to-face, and it put all the pressure on, on you guys to do the whole thing and, and for us just to receive the results, but I know it's one of the things we had to do this year, and I think it worked out well, and appreciate both of you doing the job.
I agree. So if we're all happy with what's in front of us, which the, the information that's been presented today, which includes the, the tax cut, would, would be included in this budget. It represents a tax cut. It represents putting more money towards our reserves, and I think it's an excellent option that's in front of us. And if you all agree and somebody'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing for the 2021 budget?
If I could just, if I could just jump in here, Cole, really fast. So on our original budget calendar, which we've been trying very hard to stick to, even though it's been very difficult as Derek and I work on things like, you know, COVID response and the Spark funding and all those things that, you know, that have came, came up on the scene that Derek and I are working on in addition to the budget. Our original budget hearing date that we sat, that we set on our calendar was August 5th, and we can still hold to that if you guys want to. I have already contacted the Ottawa Herald, and they're prepared to publish this budget on Saturday, which would give us enough time to hold the hearing on Wednesday, August 5th. And I currently, on your summary that you guys have in front of you, we have it scheduled for 6 o'clock, although that, that time is very flexible. We cannot go before August 5th because that is the 10-day window that we have to publish. So anytime after August 5th, you can make your hearing date, and anytime in day or night that you want to have that, just let me know.
This is Commissioner Dickinson.
Go ahead, Commissioner Dickinson.
Would we try to have it as a in-person meeting?
That, that, this is Derek. That would be a decision that the board would need to make. As I've said, I, I am not inclined at this juncture to have in-person meetings generally. Having said that, I know the budget hearing is a big one, and if that's something that the board would, would like to have in person, then certainly we can do that, though in my six years here, I'm not sure. I think maybe a year or two, we've had one, maybe two people there, but it's not typically something that draws a lot of public interest. Thank you.
Commissioner Howard, I think we, it took 12 seconds or something last year to do, so.
Well, what's the, uh, go ahead, Roy, you had something to say? Yeah, I, I think that hearing, even if we just have one person, I think it ought to be in-person, hearing myself. But I was just. But I was just going to ask Janet, when the canvas of the primary election is going to be? Does she have a date for that?
You guys have a study session on the 10th, and that's the Monday following the election. And typically, we've tried to do that on a study session date. So, I was going to talk about that in staff report. So, if that works for you guys, then I'm planning on having it immediately following the study session on the 10th.
All right. Let's shelve the canvas to Suskin right now. We've got two things in front of us. First, let's get a sense from everybody if they're inclined to do an in-person or a Zoom budget hearing. Roy, you said that you were inclined to have one in-person, right?
That's correct, yes.
All right. And does that, what is it, August 5th date work for you?
Yes, yeah, August 5th, 6 o'clock, in-person.
All right. Janet, did you correct we could change that time if we need?
Absolutely.
Okay. But evenings when we've done it out of an abundance of consideration for anybody who maybe works and wants to attend. So, let's go with 6, unless that doesn't work for somebody else. Rick, in-person or Zoom, what do you have a preference?
Yes, I think we should stay with the Zoom. I think we rolled the dice the last time. This isn't going down any... I don't see any reason to take a chance on this when this meeting rarely has anyone even come. And if someone wanted to, they could join the Zoom and do it. The 5th is fine with me, but I think it should stay like we're doing and not go to in-person meetings right now.
All right. 6 o'clock works for you? 6 o'clock a good time for you?
Yeah, 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 that's fine.
Don, what's your thought, in-person or virtual by Zoom?
Well, we have two meetings that day.
Yeah, one, I mean, we would have our morning meeting, but then this would potentially be later that evening when we do the budget hearing.
I can go either way. Who knows what things are going to be like a week from now? It sure ain't going to be a lot better.
Yeah, it'd be two weeks from today, I believe. Yep, exactly two weeks.
It's going to be better.
Sure.
They can't even decide whether their kids are going to school or not, let alone us being in a room together. So, I can go with Zoom as long as we don't present a problem.
Okay, so you're open. Ian, what are your thoughts?
I would be fine either way. I think we did 6 o'clock before because I think the city of Ottawa lots of times is the same day as ours, and theirs is at 7:00. So, and again, I think we did ours in like 12 seconds and they did theirs in about half a minute. So, again, we don't have a lot of people that are interested in showing up. But so, Zoom probably would work either way. You never know. I mean, I didn't know I was going to be in quarantine. So, you know, who knows?
All right. That just leaves me, right? Personally, this is our largest decision we make every year. I mean, this is the largest policy decision we make. We're a policymaking board. It's very important. No, it doesn't always get a lot of attention, but it doesn't really reflect its importance. When we've had items that are important or at least important to get a lot of attention, a lot of interest from the public, we've gone out of our way to accommodate with the evening times and things like that. I could do either. Personally, I'd prefer in-person just out of an abundance of, you know, trying to be open to the public to get any input we can. The public health consideration of it. You're right, not a lot of people usually attend. So, I guess to me, that tells me that hopefully it wouldn't be a lot of risk in it either. So, I would lean towards in-person myself. That kind of leaves us with two people who are... either way, two people who are for in-person and one person who prefers a Zoom. So, that leans us towards an in-person meeting by that count. I guess that's the way we'll go. There's a slight majority in that way. Any other?
Like I said, this is Don. I don't have a problem though. Just, you know, I guess it's just a thought, but you're right in what you said. So, I can go with whatever is determined.
Sure. All right. Well, it looks like it'll be an in-person meeting, 6:00 PM on the 5th. Our regular one would still likely be Zoom by then. But, and hopefully, obviously, we're set up where you can social distance, we can be safe. We've got plenty of room, especially considering the amount that usually attends. Yeah, I think this would be far outside of our way to try and accommodate anybody who wanted to make a comment on what is the largest policy decision we make. So, we'll go forward with that. All right. Any more questions or comments before we look to make a motion on setting the public hearing for the budget that's in front of us?
This is Don, motion to approve.
Motion to approve on the 5th at 6:00 PM?
Yes.
All right, is there a second?
Commissioner Dunn, second.
Commissioner Dunn, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Stollmeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Wimmer?
Yes. All right, this brings us to staff reports. Derek?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. First, I want to talk about Janet and I's work on the budget a little bit. You know, when I look back, I've been here almost six years. And I think in that amount of time, we've done so many things that I'm proud of. I hope the board is proud of. And certainly, you know, the citizens invested, I think they would be proud as well. But among the things that I'm most proud of is the team that we've built here. You know, you look at some of the hires that we've made.
Hold on a second. Hey, Derek, we're getting a bunch of noise. Dustin, can you tell me where that's coming from? Are you there, Dustin? Is it showing up on anybody else's phone? Janet, are you hearing it?
Yes, I'm hearing that too, Colt.
Lot of feedback.
I hear it through Roy.
Are you still hearing it? Yeah. Dustin, I know he's working as well as helping us out on this. So, he may be here. Well, if anybody's got anything making noise close to their phone, I guess if you'd kind of maybe tidy that up. Go ahead, Derek. I guess we're just going to have to deal with it.
Sounds like a fax machine.
It sure does.
Okay, can you still hear it?
Yeah, it's gotten better. So, go ahead.
Okay, the sump pump out here was just running. I wonder if that's what you were hearing?
Almost sounded like somebody's cell phone sitting close to their computer, but...
Okay, but it's gotten better?
Yep.
Yes, much better.
Okay. I was, what I was talking about, among the things I think we've done exceptionally well is build our team here. And you look at some of the hires that we've made. And I can't possibly list all of the employees that I have been impressed with. David Lee, Casey Brady, Sari Maple, Brandon Sands. All of them have been tremendous hires. And they've all done an exceptional job. And you look at what we've done with existing employees. Take a guy like Nick Robbins, who was a great ambulance director, and you promote him. And he's currently serving in a second quote-unquote promotion. And he's excelling in all roles. Peg Pearson was promoted to a superintendent where she excelled. But every year when we work on the budget, I'm reminded that Janet becoming the finance officer, that was really kind of the original move. As you know, when I accepted the job as county administrator with the stipulation that we hire a finance officer. My background is in law, and her background is in finance. And so, it made sense to establish that partnership. And I can honestly say that with every year that passes, it just, it works more and more cohesively. I feel like despite numerous challenges, you know, originally, it was the tax lid. This year, it was COVID. We were just getting this budget more and more pinned down. And so much of that can be attributed to Janet. I mean, we talk about this being our budget, and it is our budget. I have a lot of input into this budget, but she puts it together. I mean, she is exceptional in her role as finance officer. She's earned the trust of all of our employees, so they have no hesitation about going to her with budget-related questions. And that needs to be said. And so, I appreciate her work on this and look forward to continuing working on budgets with her. That being said, so much of my time continues to be spent on COVID. There was a major announcement from the governor's office on schools and the potential of bumping back the start date of schools that has led to some chaos within the county, specifically the health department, trying to plan for what this all could look like. That decision will be in front of the school board today. And I believe they're meeting, the state school board. I believe that meeting's at 10:00 AM. So, we should know by late morning or early afternoon whether or not the governor's order is going to be signed by the school board. We have a meeting set up for tomorrow with each superintendent. So, Nick and I and Dr. Ransom, we're going to meet with the superintendents. And we're going to talk about a lot of things, but the governor's order is chief among the topics. The health department, along with Casey, has been working incredibly hard on response to calls for the school district. And I will let Nick get into that in more detail. But at this juncture, we feel like the county's role with schools is basically in helping them respond in the event that there is a COVID infection. Like, we aren't necessarily telling them how to set up their classes and how to do block scheduling and all that. What we're trying to help with is, okay, you have an infection. You have 10 infections. And having kind of a step plan in place to help them deal with that. And Nick is on the call, and I'll have him speak more to that once I'm through with this report. Last night, we had a meeting with... there are a bunch of people on the call, representatives from the cities, the superintendents, representatives from the universities, some of our community partners, to discuss, we've been calling it Spark funding, CARES Act funding, however you want to refer to it. We finally have our consultant mobilized and onboard. And so, we took the opportunity to basically introduce the consultant and walk through the process of submitting reimbursements and submitting requests for direct aid spending. I feel like that meeting went incredibly well. I've been super impressed in the short time that I've worked with our consultant. They have done an exceptional job. Part of the reason we picked, so the firm is Widow Brian. One of the reasons we picked them was they have been working for months with Sedgwick County on the exact same reimbursement. So, Sedgwick, they got their CARES Act funding directly from the federal government because they are a county of over 500,000 people. So, the way that legislation was written is that if you are a county or municipality of over 500,000, then the funding could flow straight from the federal government. You didn't need the state at the pass-through. And so, over the last several months, our consultant, Widow Brian, has kind of built an expertise in helping Sedgwick County through this process. They're also representing Riley County, Shawnee County, Gary County, Kingman County, and a handful of others. And so, through that process, they have really learned what it is that is eligible for reimbursement. They've got great ideas on direct aid spending. And so, I feel like everybody on that call was pleased and certainly have gotten a lot of emails this morning thanking us for taking the time to do that. And so, that's a synopsis of how my time's been spent. Do you have any questions for me before I turn this over to Nick?
All right.
All right, thanks, Colt.
Thank you, Derek. Nick?
Good morning, commissioners. This is Nick. Derek did a good job giving us a synopsis of what our major project has been over the past week. So, I'm going to dive in with kind of what we've been doing and end with that. We have seen and continued to see a rise in positive tests. We had, I believe, eight or nine positives come in last Friday, which further solidifies why we're in the process of hiring extra nurses and a clerk to help handle some of this paperwork involved with the COVID response. Spent a lot of time over the weekend setting up testing. Monday, we tested. We have relocated the trailer to a different spot in the annex parking lot to help with egress for the people coming in for testing. With that, we've also been working on a contract with OFP. As we come into flu season, as we come into their busy time, our busy time, our partnership's going to look a little different. My nurses and some other employees will be learning the swabs. So, we'll be taking over some of the swabbing responsibilities for our KDAGG samples. And that's a partnership we're continuing to work with, with OFP. So, a lot of moving parts on the personnel and what the response going into September is going to look like with flu season. With that, we're also trying to figure out how vaccine clinics are going to look with... if school starts back up, the kids still got to have the vaccines that are required. So, we're in the process of all that. With that, the... my team has discussed what our response to the superintendents will be on the reopening. I know Derek, myself, Aaron, Roy has kind of been a big player in the school reopening. We decided that we would put out a process or a paper that basically tells the stages of what we will do in a response. So, as Derek said, basically, our stage one will ask them to follow the guidelines set forth that, you know, keep to have prevention measures for the spread of this, to clean the areas, and limit visitors, that kind of stuff. The stage two would be what happens if you have one. Stage three is going to be more if you get 10% of a classroom with a specific area, what we're going to do. Then it continues on up to a stage four and stage five, with basically stage five being a district closure and what we will do with that. I thank Casey and Aaron for their hard work in it. I think the document looks good. Speaking to a couple of the superintendents, this is exactly what they're looking for so they can go out to their students, their students' families and say, this is how health department's going to respond, and we're going to work hand-in-hand with them. So, I think this is a great document. Other than that, we continue to roll with the punches. Other than that, we continue to roll with the punches and do what we need to do. I do thank Sari and her staff for helping me get my new employees hired. Janet for taking care of the financing part of this COVID response. With that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Sounds like great work, Nick. I think that approach of trying to assist other people and, you know, doing what's right for them is a good policy. And I think we're going to get more fruit out of that. Seems like whenever there's a hard and fast kind of mandate, like, you know, think about what came from the state, there's a certain amount of people who are just going to have a knee jerk reaction to not do it. But locally, look at things we've done, like just trying to encourage, you know, folks to do the healthy thing and think of others. I think about, you know, providing masks to all the businesses and just stuff like that. I think we get a better response out of that. And I think that's a good policy, a good approach you're taking. And I think the community agrees. I've heard nothing but really good things. You know, focused on both sides of the, I guess, issue. I don't know how it became an issue, an opinion item, but I think that the county's doing a good job. So those two are, those two groups are pretty far apart. So when you can get a positive reaction from both of those, I think, I think that speaks a lot to what everybody's doing at the county.
Let's commiserate, Don. Nick, if a person tests positive, what's the protocol for that person that tests positive?
If an individual tests positive, actually, the guidelines just changed on that last Friday. But if a person tests positive, they are in quarantine, in isolation for 10 days or 24 hours following symptoms. It was 72 hours following symptoms. Now it's 24 hours. So you're in quarantine or isolation for 10 days. Let's say you have a fever and still have symptoms. At the end of that 10 days, you then have to be fever for, or symptoms for 24 hours before you're released to go back to normal activities.
Does the person that tests positive, does he check in with somebody and say, well, my 10 days are up. I feel good and am I good to go? How does that work?
We have staff that follows up with those individuals. Some of them are text messaging to our phone every day. Some of them we call. As our staff continue to get busier and that, we'll back that off. It used to be every day, but with the amount of positives, unless it's really of high risk, it's about every two to three days we talk to them until we release them from quarantine or isolation. So they are in contact with the health department, yes.
Okay, okay. All right. I heard somebody else start to speak. Was there another comment before we move on? Maybe I was just hearing things. All right, Nick. Appreciate you. We all do. Sheriff, are you on?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Sure can. Go ahead.
Okay, just a couple of things. First thing is, we're following with particular attention to what David Lee's doing out there with the landfill. As you are all aware, we have our training range out there in that area as well. So we also do have an interest in that is to kind of, we're trying to just stay up on what that looks like and what could potentially happen to that area that we're currently using and then what our long-term goals are going to be as well. So just something that, you know, that again, we're paying attention to. Another thing has been mentioned about the candidate forum that was last night. Through this season, one thing that I've also heard is some concern from people with the amount of reserves funds that are, that the county has built up. I just wanted to say that I agree with the trajectory that we're on. As Derek has alluded to, having those funds there potentially is going to be able to help us keep that mill levy flat and reduce taxes in the long run and while still moving the county forward. So I, again, I know that it is out there. It's something that's being talked about. But I think it is the responsible thing and I just commend the board and everyone for what they're doing. And I think that is a very good thing that we've got going. The last thing I have is that you may see a couple deputies in the county that have a different looking patch on their uniform. That says, that patch is a little different colors and it says Franklin County CAT on it. CAT stands for Community Action Team. I kind of mentioned something about this quite a while back. But what this, what the CAT team is, is we took our drug enforcement unit and we've kind of expanded it a little and done some tweaking to that. Just to try to bolster that, we do believe we still have a drug problem in Franklin County. And this is a different way for us to attack that problem. And they've been up and running for a little over a month now, I believe. And our numbers are looking good. I believe we're making a solid impact, a big impact on that. But I just wanted the board to know, in case you see someone with that different looking patch or someone else sees it and asks you about it, that's what that is about. And the goal of this is to continue to expand that CAT, the team, to include the police departments that are in the county as well. We still work with them, but we're still looking to maybe formalize something. So with the team, this was a, kind of we gave the, Lieutenant Ferguson is the one that kind of headed, heads that up and wrote up all the proposals and the guidelines for that. And we're very pleased with what we're seeing there. We think it's a positive thing for the citizens of our county. And we're just going to keep pressing forward. Other than that, if anyone has any questions for me, then I'd be happy to answer.
Sounds like you covered it. Appreciate the update and the kind words there.
Thank you.
David Lee?
Hi, commissioners. Just to let you know, we finished the small bridge project on Ohio south of Haskell that involved, there was a wooden bridge structure that was failing. We took out the bridge structure and replaced it with a large crossroad tube. As a part of that project, we also worked on the ditches and re-rocked the road. Yesterday, we started our next big project, which is replacing the low water crossing on Haskell east of Ohio, kind of in the same area as the previous project. We'll be closing that road and tearing out the existing concrete low water crossing and the tubes that are associated with that. And we'll be installing some new tubes and new concrete, new driving service. That work will take a few weeks to complete. By the time that we get the demolition done, divert the creek a little bit so that we can work down on the channel, do the install of the pipes and backfill and cover it with concrete and let that cure. So the road will be closed for a little while. But once we're done, water should flow through that area much, much better than it does currently. And it will certainly be a safer structure. Let's see, the project on Virginia Road just north of Lane, I finally got a response on that. The plans are in, scheduled to be done with, or have the field check plans done middle to late next month, which gives us plenty of time to work through the process, the review process with KDOT and remain on target for the 2021 construction season. As a part of that, KDOT has recently sent a formal agreement for you all to review and approve. I'll have that on your agenda next week. In addition to that project, we'll also have, be bringing before you a proposal for a new motor grader that's out of time through our buyback system. We'll also be bringing approval to seek financing bids for both the grader and the landfill compactor. And we are, I am very, very hopeful that we'll have a bid package ready to go for the patching and overlay on our asphalt roads. And then the last thing, which I'm kind of loading you guys up again next week, is approval to apply for the KDOT off-system bridge program, which is open again. And we would like to submit the same two bridges that we did last year with the hopes that at least one of them is selected. So all of that will be before you next week. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Anything, any questions for David? Didn't sound like it. Derek, I had a question on the NX parking lot, the slurry seal there. I think, I know we sealed it up with crack seal before winter and then COVID hit and a lot of capital projects got put on hold. I think that was one that we kind of put the brakes on because the slurry seal did protect it in the meantime. But as I remember, that we held off on the slurry seal for that reason. Would there maybe, what are your thoughts? Or maybe there'd be an appetite from the board to think about moving forward on that again?
Yeah, I, this is Derek. I, that is a project and it's, I have it. It's an entirely different project, but it's similar to my thoughts on the NX remodel. There was a period at the beginning of COVID where there was a lot of uncertainty surrounding what our financial situation was going to look like. We had no idea if our revenues would come in. We had no idea if our valuations would plummet. And we didn't know what kind of expenses we were looking at or if there would be funding available to help with that. I feel like we have a better idea now on all of those fronts. Our revenues did come in. Our values are holding steady. To the extent we've incurred expenses, we have funding there to help with that. And so I, I'm comfortable recommending that we move forward on certain projects. And the slurry seal is certainly one of them. I think it'd be a great time to do it. And so I am happy to reach out to Brandon Sands and have him start preparing that and then getting a bid solicitation put together and moving forward.
Does any, any of the commissioners object to that?
Commissioners?
Go ahead, Don. You were in there first.
Object to that idea at all?
All right. All right, Don's in favor of it. Roy?
Yeah, I think I'll go forward and get it redone and restriped to look a lot better than it is now.
You bet. We've made some progress on that. It'd be good to get it looking sharp. All right. Sounds like everybody's, sounds like we're in favor going forward with that. Derek, anything else?
I would just sent you, threw it back in my direction. I would mention that, as you know, Cole, you and I were on an FCDC. We had a board meeting there last week. We discussed the office move. We discussed, Paul continues to work hard trying to find candidates for the Community Development Block Grant Program. We're finding that it's a smaller niche of businesses that are eligible than maybe we originally thought. And with ever-changing guidelines, I think Paul has his hands full there. But I, he's, you know, he's doing us a solid by being out there and kind of bulldogging that for us. And I know, because I'm copied on the emails, I know he reaches out to each of you commissioners when he's in your district, working on your behalf. And so he's continued to do that. We talked about the marketing of Proximity Park. And we have, you know, found the consultant that we want to work with. And so we're kind of working through the process there. But we all, everyone on that FCDC board realizes the investment that we have in Proximity Park. And so we feel like now's an appropriate time to really get out there and start marketing it as the construction surrounding it is, you know, starting to get into that final phase. And then we had a guest speaker, Ryan Browning was his name, from Kansas Gas, who talked a little bit about Kansas Gas and, you know, their relationship here to the, to FCDC and the county. And so that, that's really what was discussed at that meeting and that's all I have, Cole.
Thanks. I appreciate, appreciate you giving that update. All right, let's move on to commissioners' comments and board reports. Don?
Yeah, about the only thing last week or so what I've done. So I did, on the Middle Merit Dane Advisory Board, you know, I served on that. And we met by Zoom twice this week, once last week and once this week, to finalize our suggestions to the State Water Office. And it looks like the Franklin County has been budgeted through the State Water Office $154,000 in water projects in Franklin County for the upcoming year. It hasn't been, put the rubber stamp on it yet, but that was the projected money that was put out there and we discussed. And we did send in our recommendations and approvals of what we thought that we ought to be getting. And the only one other thing I might mention, you mentioned on the, the business's money and the grant. I know Paul, I know, I don't know if he mentioned or you guys, one of the deals he was working on was if, if a person owned a business and it was affected by this and it was losing money or business and so forth, they were checking into, if this person has another job, why should their other job count against their business that's losing money due to the COVID? And I don't know if that, you ever heard anything on that or, or it was mentioned?
Don, I'll have to reach back out to Paul and have a discussion with him on that, so.
I do know that's a topic that he told a couple people. I know Paul's doing his best and he even seen their point. I mean, why should their salary from somewhere else count against their business that's being affected by COVID? So thank you.
You're welcome. Hey, Cole, before we continue through board comments, you skipped over Janet.
I sure did. All right. Sorry, Janet.
That's okay. I didn't have anything incredibly pressing, but I just wanted to reiterate a couple of things. The canvas is August, we have it planned for August 10th, as I told Roy earlier. And we are early voting in the courthouse right now. I know we've had a lot of citizens questioning about the courthouse. The courthouse is open for business and you can come in here and early vote. We have our signs outside and our sign in the hall letting you know where you need to go to vote. I just remind everyone that we are asking that you wear masks in the courthouse as a courtesy to other citizens. Many citizens don't have a choice of whether they don't come to the courthouse. So, so whether they, you know, are susceptible to the virus or not, they still have to come to the courthouse. So we're asking that all citizens in the courthouse wear masks so, to protect their neighbors. So just keep that in mind. Our early voting hours are posted on the website, on the Clerk and Election page. They're also posted out on Facebook. Casey put a post out yesterday that has our early voting hours. So if anyone has any questions, they can feel free to call us and discuss that. We have sent out close to 1,600 advanced ballots now and we're getting a lot of those back. We have close to 500 back already, which is an amazing number. That's more than we normally send out total. So that's really awesome to see those results. Our new drop box out front is getting a workout already. So as people return their advanced ballots to us or return advanced ballot forms or whatever, we have a brand new drop box out front on Main Street, right by the mailbox and the UPS box. It's all decorated up in red, white and blue. So you will see it and know it's ours. Feel free to drop any of your election items in there, whether that's an application or a ballot return. a ballot return. So, and the last thing is, is we are finished preparing all of the local budgets, like township, cemeteries, fire districts, all of those. And you'll be seeing those in the Ottawa Herald over the next, you know, week or so with those budget hearing dates. Most of them set for the first and second week of July. So, I've been working really closely with the Ottawa Herald, making sure we get all of those published on time. And I know a lot of people always are concerned and don't feel like they have notice of when their budget hearings are that they can go to to discuss particular items that are on their tax bill. Now is the time to be looking for those and find out when their budget meetings are so you can go and discuss that with them. I have a copy of all of those budgets in my office. The cities will bring me their budgets as they get them, get them ready. I already have some of them, like Ramtoole Lane and Princeton. So, the other ones are still working on theirs and they'll get them to me as soon as possible. But if you have any, if any of our citizens have concerns about townships or fire districts or anything like that, they can come in and take a look at their budget. I can give them the hearing date and time that they have set up so they can go to those meetings and discuss those budgets. So, that's all I have.
And Roy brought up canvassing the election. You say that's on the 10th?
August 10th, immediately following the study session like we generally do.
Okay, good deal. All right, any questions for Janet?
That'll have to be face to face, right?
Yes, we will have to have a face to face meeting for that.
Okay, thank you.
Good question, Don. All right, I am. Commissioners' comment, Board report?
The only thing I had was I listened to the Governor's conference last Friday afternoon and again, it's mostly COVID updates. Dr. Norman, who is the chief medical person in the county, made a couple of comments that I thought were really good. He said, just, he said gathering just because you can doesn't mean you should. You know, going to work just sick just because you can doesn't mean you should. He said every day that we don't get this COVID virus under control extends it another two weeks. So, it really is important that we all try to flatten the curve again. We did really good one time and we kinda let up. So, we just need to go back to really work hard to flatten the curve because school's not gonna go back to school until we can do that. So, we all need to do our part and I'm just encouraging everybody to do that. That's it.
All right, Rick?
I don't have anything to add.
All right, Roy?
Yes, I attended the candidate forum last night. There was a pretty good turnout, weather turned out to be good and just heard from all the candidates that are gonna be in the primary. I don't know if Nick is still on the line. Remembered a question for him. Nick on the line still?
I'm here.
Yeah, Nick, the VA is starting to give out flu shots already. Do you know anything about starting early on flu shots like the VA is doing?
That is one of the biggest pushes right now is to get your flu shot as early as possible. The Health Department, we're working to try to get them as quick as we can to start giving them in hopes that we can eliminate some of the fall flu and not overdo our hospitals with flu and COVID. So, yeah, that is a push is to get the flu shot early.
Okay, thank you. Let's have an area agency on aging meeting Friday and that's all I have.
All right, I also don't have anything I need to add before we look to adjourn this meeting. We have a study session scheduled for Monday. Do we have anything on that agenda yet, Derek?
Not that I am aware of. I will obviously be in touch with you, Colt, if there's not anything. Are you okay, is the board okay with, with canceling that or would you like me to find something to put on it?
Think we need to have a meeting just to have a meeting, but it's a little early to make that call yet as far as to cancel it. So, we'll wait to see if something comes up unless any Commissioners have an item they want, want studied, want us to dig into. So, if so, I guess.
I will just tell you, Colt, I would tell you generally and, and I've always been of the opinion that you don't have meetings for the sake of having meetings, but I would say especially right now because my staff and I are exceptionally busy. And so, come Friday, if, if we still don't have something, I'll give it the next couple of days. But if we don't have something, I will probably call you with a recommendation that we go ahead and cancel on Monday.
Okay, sounds good. All right.
That sounds good to me. Roy, it sounds good to me.
All right. Well, if there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
This is Don, motion to adjourn.
All right, is there a second?
Commissioner Don, Commissioner Don's second.
All right, all in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.